I want to order this workshop of the council of the Borough of Gettysburg. We do not have any opening remarks, but I do have one announcement for legal reasons. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the June 12, 2023 monthly business meeting of the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A 1 and Section 708A 5 of the Sunshine Act. We also have no special presentations this night, so we will go directly into public comment. This first section is for items on the agenda. That includes the Gettysburg Inner Loop Racehorse Alley discussion, the Employee Policy Manual, Chapters 4, 7 through 24, and oversized vehicle parking in the historic district. If you would like to make comment about something else, we have a second public comment section at the end of the meeting. Please use the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and please try to limit yourself to five minutes. Thank you.
No problem. Hi, guys. How are we doing? I'm Sue. It's a sparse crowd today.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ryan Hodges, 137 Ridge Avenue. I spoke a couple of weeks ago about the retail transient ordinance. Tonight, I want to talk about the oversized vehicle parking in the historic district since it's on the agenda. And I'm sure you're going to give a great presentation on that. I look forward to that. So as the ordinance is currently written, it says temporary reserved parking for passenger buses and large-capacity vans for short-term use only in the loading and unloading of passengers for visitation at historic sites, museums, and cultural centers, theaters, and tourist attractions. The reason I want to bring that up is I also am asking this ordinance to be rewritten to include brick-and-mortar restaurants or retail shops that have the ability to service large groups at one time, such as a restaurant that has seating for 400 or more people or a retail shop that has 4,500, 5,000 square feet or more. I'm not sure why those are being excluded from this ordinance. I just don't think it's fair. An example would be the Shriver House Museum can block off parking for a bus, but the Gettysburger down the block cannot. So what's the difference? They're both bringing money. They're both an asset to the borough. So I think that ordinance needs to be revisited. And as we speak, one of my neighbors, a restaurant on Newark Street, is doing a high-volume bus business right now. I think she's Linda here at Upper Crust, has done over 100 buses already this spring and early summer, has a lot more buses booked this summer and the fall, and taking reservations for next year. And I've seen those buses, since I've very across the street there, have struggled with parking, double parking, parking in Lincoln Square, parking down the block, parking two blocks away, track the trailers passing them where the ordinance has said she can block off the spots directly in front of her businesses there, they're going to load and then go park somewhere else. I think that would be definitely an asset. I think it's unsafe, actually. So I look forward to hearing the presentation tonight, but my opinion, just rewrite the ordinance. Just include large-capacity places that can seat lots loads of people at one time. Okay? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public comment. Again, this could be about the Inner Loop, the Employee Policy Manual, or oversized vehicle parking. Gary?
About what?
The Inner Loop, the Employment Policy Manual, or oversized vehicle parking.
I serve on the Happy Board. I also serve as your chairman of HARB. But I'm here tonight, more or less, just as a citizen with a residence in the borough. And I want to talk about alleys in general. And I know this council is put in some difficult situations at times trying to resolve issues that can become contentious depending on the viewpoint of people. And I'd really like to just tell the council that at this point, I think you really have an opportunity to address how you're going to view alleys in general in the borough. You know, I think we have to acknowledge that our alleys were never intended to be thoroughfares. They're built to service the residences and the buildings along them. They are intended in residential neighborhoods, basically to serve the citizens that come into those areas. I happen to live in an alley, live on an alley that has no residences behind it. Some of you are fortunate enough to live in our neighborhoods that either don't have alleys or have alleys where both sides back up as residences. They tend to be not as heavily used. They tend to serve the residences that are there. My residence is on East Middle Street, and we have recently, over the past several years, I've lived there 40 years, have noticed the increase in traffic on the alley. Now, that alley serves my daughter, who's in a wheelchair, who walks up the alley to go to the library and other places because it's easier to use than the sidewalks. It's smoother, there's less difficulty. She walks on that alley. We watch people walk and bike down the alley along the tennis courts all the time, heading out to do what we call the three-mile loop on the battlefield. We, I send my grandkids, with usually their parents or their grandmother, up the alley on scooters to go to the playground because we're fortunate to live right next to the elementary school. So these alleys serve our neighborhood. Many years ago, when in my early career as chairman of HARB, I stood where there used to be a building at the entrance to the alley across from the 711. And Gettysburg College was redoing the Ice House at that time. And Charlie Sterner was the manager, and Charlie Sterner was a friend of mine. And he proposed at that time that we should tear down that building, which was a historic building, to make the entrance to the alley that you'll be talking about tonight wider. And they did that. HARB recommended against it. The decision of HARB was blasted by the papers and the hand over evening sun, is not looking to the future and being too protective of historic buildings. And we dealt with all that. That's when we got the nickname the Hysterical Architectural Review Board. People thought our decisions were ridiculous. But we lost, and the Borough Council voted to tear it down, seeing as this is an opportunity to increase the flow of traffic on that alley. Charlie Sterner, after he resigned and was fighting his cancer, confided, because we were friends, he said, "We should have listened to you all. That was a mistake." Because what we watched over the years was that alley deteriorate as it was used for more and more traffic. And the houses, particularly on the end closest to Beaufort Avenue, people have to go off and go to the side because they're coming both ways. We watched that on my alley on East Middle Street. We recently put a new fence up, and we're trying to decide whether we should take away more of our backyard to move our cars in further because we have the same situation, people meeting, turning, and having to pull off the alley to let other people go by. So I really want to speak to the fact that I think it would be beneficial to the borough to take some time and look at how we reinforce the fact that alleys serve the businesses, they serve the residences, they allow truck service for garbage, they do allow people to walk and get places, people do use them as pedestrian paths. And what happens as you increase the traffic on the alleys, on a street like mine, I have increased traffic on East Middle Street, I'm having increased traffic right behind me on the alley, it diminishes the quality of life for a residential neighborhood. I don't think that block of Chambersburg Street is lost. I think the plans that have been presented for stormwater and fixing it up will restore some of that quality of what the neighborhood there used to be like, and it'll protect those buildings, whether they're rented as apartments, businesses, or become single-family. So as I said, I really wanted to speak just generally of the opportunity you have. It may not be easy, but to establish how you're going to look at alleys in general. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for your long service to the borough. Public comment.
Hello. My name is Raina Cooper. I live at 210 West Broadway in Gettysburg. And I'm here because I'm interested in the safe completion of the Gettysburg Inner Loop, especially the Racehorse Alley segment. My interest stems from my career as a nutrition and health educator, my fitness activities as a borough pedestrian, and as an avid bicyclist. I've been a member of two Adams County task forces relating to health, nutrition, and lifestyle for about 25 years, in addition to my career as a health educator. I worked in areas promoting the benefits of regular physical activity and good nutrition for all age groups and for people with type 2 diabetes in particular through Penn State Extension and the Pennsylvania WIC program. Now, we know that walking is the easiest way to increase physical activity, and it requires no special equipment. I've found that a major factor in success for people who've been encouraged to exercise more for health reasons is the accessibility, the walkability, and the perceived safety of their neighborhood. If the area around them is considered unsafe, or if they perceive that the area is not really designated for their desired activities, such as walking or bicycling or a combination, then they're unlikely to start that recommended physical activity. Without walkable surroundings, physical activity is greatly limited. People don't want to be in an unsafe area, and they don't want to be perceived as doing something that's not quite the norm in that space. When you're new to the idea of walking and bicycling as a fitness activity, and it's easily accessible, not a big storm, safe, and in an area that's identified for that purpose, community members will take advantage of it and be healthier as a result. For health promotion, communities should make walking and bicycling a safe and easy choice. It shouldn't be difficult. It should be something that's there calling to them, whether they're using that bicycling and walking for transportation or for recreation or fitness. And this is the beauty in the way that the Borough and Happy have interacted to develop the Gettysburg Inner Loop. They've identified, they've researched, improved, expanded, and publicized a well-designed and continuous space that says to the public, "Come to me, use me, get healthy, stay healthy, and stay safe while you do it." A continuous and safe inner loop for pedestrian and bicycle travel throughout the borough will be an economic incentive and will draw people into a closer connection with our business community while promoting health and activity. The borough, state, and local community groups have worked together over the last 15 years, and I've just been watching this, you know, as a consumer of news in the borough. I've been very impressed with the way this has happened. There has been a lot of community backing of the project. They've received tremendous planning and financial support from multiple individuals and entities in our community. And I've been especially impressed with the reliance on professional guidance and technical expertise that has been employed in the development of the GIL. So it has become a highly successful, safe, and a credit to the community and its governance. Happy and the borough are to be commended. I urge the borough to continue to use this informed process to move forward with completion of the Gettysburg Inner Loop using the safest of the three proposed options for Racehorse Alley. I support the C.S. Davidson engineering recommendations for using the Franklin funnel option to direct all traffic to a traffic signal for improved safety. I've used Racehorse Alley frequently as a bicyclist and as a pedestrian at all times of the day, and I believe that modification will improve safety while encouraging physical activity and self-powered transportation. This project helps make our community more friendly, safer, more vibrant, and encourages residents and visitors to walk and bicycle their way through the heart of Gettysburg. Thank you for all that you do as borough representatives, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, ma'am. Public comment.
Michael Bramall. I live at 521 Moritz Road in Montana. I'm a member of the Happy Board, and I had a few points that I wanted to make tonight. One is that Happy's men and the borough have been working on the Gettysburg Inner Loop for a number of years, and will be working on it for a number of years yet to come. We have maybe about one-half to three-quarters of it done, mostly on the south and west side of town. This next phase here with Racehorse Alley is a big part of it that's going to be coming into play. We seek to develop the GIL because it provides opportunities to walk and bike more safely and more enjoyably. As Raina said, we want to try to encourage and promote good health. We also like to let people have fun and enjoy the recreational aspects of doing it. It helps a lot to feel that you can do it safely. And riding on city streets are not the worst. I've certainly ridden on worse streets. But having some kind of a dedicated trail that either reduces auto traffic or, in some cases, eliminates it, some places like the rec park, is very desirable from a liking of walking standpoint. One thing, in the previous meeting, I came to you with some observation of times that had taken me to traverse the Racehorse Alley shortcut, as I'll call it, in a car versus driving on Chambersburg Street. I said at that time that I didn't see much difference in those times. Tried to get a few more observations. I don't really have the patience to be able to get enough for, I think, any kind of statistical conclusions, but I can just sum it up by saying that going down Racehorse Alley in a car, fairly consistent, fairly predictive, predictable, there's not too much variation that goes on with that. In my experience, and you know, the 15 times that I rode on Chambersburg Street, going from west to east, and going, 15 times, I agree, going east to west, that there were two times in each direction that I had to stop for stoplights, wait for cars to turn. My time got over two minutes. Otherwise, most of the times I found going on the Racehorse Alley shortcut was about a minute, 15 seconds. And I found that driving on Chambersburg Street 13 out of 15 times was about 5 to 10 seconds faster than driving down Racehorse Alley. One concern I wanted to just voice is that sort of a silver lining of the irregular surface in Racehorse Alley now is it does slow traffic down, which is kind of a nice thing for bicyclists, for pedestrians. Resurfacing that is going to be a benefit for bicyclists, for hikers, walkers, and it's going to be something that's going to be good for cars, too. I worry a little bit that if car traffic is allowed to remain as it is going both directions, then more cars may want to use that shortcut as they perceive it. And that has potential risks associated with it. Lastly, I just wanted to mention, in our meeting two weeks ago, Tom Jolton had mentioned in passing in his comments about some of the sacrifices that were made in Pittsburgh in developing the Great Allegheny Passage. And I think in particular, he was mentioning perhaps the practice field. I wasn't exactly sure, but something associated, I think, with the sealers that they had allowed development to happen on, had to give something up. Tom ran out of time, and he asked me just to mention tonight that one of the great benefits that's gone is some $60 million in annual economic benefits for all the towns along that particular trail. It's one of the premier trails in the country right now. It's hard to quantify what kind of economic benefit we might see from an ideal trail network in and around Gettysburg, but Happy is involved in development of trails, the 911 Trail that would go from Shanksville down to DC and up in New York, the Grand History Trail, which is a 200-mile circuit going down to the Potomac River, a CNO Potomac, and the York Heritage Rail Trail that we would tie into, and several others, too. So I think that there's some good benefits to being able to provide a friendly place. Last thing, and I'll quit very quickly. We've seen that the GIL is going to be a part of the Gettysburg Station Plan as it is now promoted, and I think of being, you know, I'd echo Gary's comments that we have a real opportunity to make this a great conduit for being able to move from one side of town to the other without having to wrestle too much with car traffic. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? Please.
Hi. I'm Sarah Kipp. I live at 126 Baltimore Street, and I'd like to start with my comments on the Employee Policy Manual. Actually, I don't have any of those. I have no idea what that is. And I trust that you all are doing a very good job of figuring that out. So I'm here tonight as a resident and as the president of Healthy Adams Bicycle Pedestrian Incorporated. I want to second the comments made by Gary and Max and Rain. I think they both, they all very eloquently made some good points about why it's important to think about Racehorse Alley differently than it has been before. So Happy has been discussing the Gettysburg Inner Loop and the use of Racehorse Alley, and I think I've said this before in previous meetings, that we certainly haven't been unanimous, and it's been heated discussion in many ways. But I did want to share that we have come to a recommendation to you that we wanted to present as the entity in Adams County that is thinking about pedestrian bicycle activities and infrastructure and how to promote healthy ways of getting around our community. So if I can find my little screenshot of what we concluded, I'll just read it. So Healthy Adams Bicycle Pedestrian Incorporated endorses converting Racehorse Alley to one-way vehicle traffic with a contraflow bicycle lane, and I know you all know what that is from all the presentations you've had from Chad and your engineers. We also endorse the Borough Engineer's Ranking and Recommendation for Racehorse Alley. And I'm not going to reiterate those, because I know you've seen those many times, but we do trust the expertise and the analysis done by your engineers, and we recommend that you follow those guidelines with what they've concluded for the use of Racehorse Alley. So thinking, listening to Gary and Rain, I just wanted to make some other comments about pedestrian and bicycle use and activity in the borough. I'm sort of, I think, I consider myself sort of a weird person to be the president of Happy because I'm not, I think, your typical bicyclist or pedestrian. I'm sort of cavalier as a bicyclist, but I think Rain gave me some great points about the fact that we need to create safe spaces if we want to get people on bicycles and walking, to reduce traffic, to create healthy ways of living. And I'm someone who, with different projects in the borough, like with the Baltimore Street Project, has been trying to get us to actually create dedicated space for bicycling by eliminating parking. You know, I would love to see Baltimore Street have no street parking and have two great wide bicycle lanes and also really ride wide sidewalks. And I recognize that that's never going to happen. We're never going to give up street parking in the borough. But one of the ways to get around that is to create safe spaces for bicycling and walking that are not our main thoroughfares. So Racehorse Alley would be a great place to start that and see how that would work to create a place for people to do those things that aren't on our main thoroughfares and get people feeling safe on bicycles, where they know they're not going to deal with a car who's parked, parallel parked, and maybe open their door and, you know, create an issue. So I'm glad that Rain brought that about feeling safe. And then Gary's points about alleyways, too. I think, you know, as someone who lives in the borough and works very close to the borough, I use all of our alleys and our streets frequently. And I think I've mentioned this before, but it's hard to imagine a change to those uses, and change is hard. But luckily for me personally, and I think for many people, memory is short. And I think it's only going to be a matter of time before you make that decision to change Racehorse Alley, and people won't remember that ever was a two-lane road with supposed benefits as a shortcut, and it'll be used in a way that would encourage bicycle use and pedestrian access in the borough. So thanks.
May I ask a follow-up question, Ms. Kipp?
Yes, sure.
Would Happy's recommendation for one-way with a contraflow be one-way west or one-way east?
Well, what we recommend is that you follow the engineer's ranking. So I believe the first ranking was the funnel, which actually said one-way both directions and then going out Franklin Street.
Oh, you're, so you're saying one-way?
So, yeah. So, so-
Following the funnel guideline.
So traffic, car traffic only going one-way, bicycle traffic going two-ways.
Got it. Thank you.
But the way, which way it goes is your decision, but we trust the ranking of the engineer.
Thank you. Steve Niebler.
Hi. I'm Steve Niebler. I live at 40 Windbrier Lane in Cumberland Township. Not a borough resident, but I was born in the borough, and I realized this afternoon I've lived six different places in the borough in my lifetime, so I've been in all parts of the town in different apartments. I had a nice speech written, but these folks said what I wanted to say a whole lot better than I could. I just want to share with you a paragraph from a recent study done on the Gettysburg Foundry, which is out next to the Eisenhower Conference Center in Cumberland Township. It's part of an effort to try to reuse that property, which at one time was a superfund waste site. It was a horribly polluted piece of ground. In a study done that was released in February of this year by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, this is a long one, Office of Brownfields and Land Revitalization, there's an interesting paragraph on page six. It says, "The Gettysburg National Military Park is one of Adams County's top attractions, but it has experienced a long-term decline in visitation. Destination Gettysburg has shifted its marketing strategy to attract a younger generation of visitors by promoting additional attractions and experiences, such as a craft beverage trail, the key one to me, outdoor recreation, and agritourism opportunities." So you've got some folks here at the federal level who came in, took a snapshot of our community, and said the future lies in, among other things, outdoor recreation. And thinking about Racehorse Alley, I'm an avid bike rider. I'm a Happy Board member. I use Racehorse Alley probably four or five times a week on a bicycle. You all have a unique opportunity here to create what I call a world-class bicycling destination if you do what we've come to refer to as the funnel. If you're brave enough and bold enough to pull it off, you have an opportunity to create something that I think people from the United States will come to see, and I honestly think people from around the world will come to Gettysburg to see this unique use of an alley and as a bicycling destination. So I would just encourage you, as Martin Luther, who has a connection to Gettysburg on a number of levels, used to say, "If you're going to sin, sin boldly." I would encourage you, if you're going to mess around with Racehorse Alley, do the right thing and make it a funnel, make it a world-class bicycle and pedestrian destination. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? This is the time? Anyone? All right. Seeing none, we will move on. Our first item on the agenda this evening is the Gettysburg Inner Loop and the Racehorse Alley one-way. I believe we have this gentleman over here, Jacob, is that right? Filling in for Mr. Claybaugh.
Yes. Jacob Spears is filling in for our Borough Engineer. Jacob is on the staff at C.S. Davidson, so we are in good hands, and he let me know that he does have some more information to share with us before you begin your discussion.
Floor is yours.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So Chad spoke with both SPG Capital-
Oh, should we, I'm sorry, should we have him go to the podium? That'd be better for the viewers.
Yeah, probably.
Would you mind speaking from the podium, please? Thank you.
Yes. Jacob Spears is filling in for our Borough Engineer. Jacob is on the staff at CS Davidson, so we are in good hands, and he let me know that he does have some more information to share with us before you begin your discussion.
Floor is yours.
Okay. Hi, everybody. So Chad spoke with both SPG Capital--
Oh, should we, I'm sorry, should we have him go to the podium? That'd be better for the viewers. Would you mind speaking from the podium, please? Thank you.
He does have a microphone back there. Sorry.
So I know we talked about in the past meetings regarding needing additional right-of-way at both SPG Capital and at Gettysburg College building there. Right now, we have 12-foot of right-of-way there, and in order to have a nine-foot lane, a one-foot travel lane, and another four feet for a bike lane, we would need an additional two feet of right-of-way at both those locations. Last week, Chad spoke with both SPG Capital and the college. SPG Capital, good news there. They want to work with us. They're willing to give us two additional feet of right-of-way and possibly a little bit more if we need to stick in any streetlights there. So they want to work with us in order to have that additional two feet of right-of-way and have a shared-use bike lane. In regards to the college, Chad spoke with Jim Biesecker, and he has not given us a final decision there, but it is not a no. Initially, I guess we're asking for more right-of-way there, but with only needing two feet of additional right-of-way, he doesn't, it's not a no right now, so he needs to speak with the college. Today, I also spoke with Trone with Creekside Apartments, and their opinion was they liked the one-way east option, which makes sense to me because it's the quickest way for them to get to their apartment, so I understand why that would be their opinion. I know with this one-way west, as well as the funnel, we show having two lanes of traffic up to the first parking area at their, at the Creekside Apartments. They talked about wanting that all the way to their next parking location right before SPG Capital. That would be very tough to do there. It's very narrow, and I don't know how possible it is to get additional right-of-way there in order to have two lanes of travel. And lastly, I wanted to add, I guess Chad initially said that we needed a decision on this one-way option by the end of July. However, due to CDBG fund deadlines, we will be splitting North Washington part of this project apart from Racehorse Alley. So Chad wanted me to let you guys know that we do not need a decision by the end of July in regards to this one-way discussion. That's all I have, so, thank you.
Okay. All right. So we have a decision in front of us. Apparently, it sounded like we don't need to make it tonight--
Correct.
--which might be ideal, as we might be able to kind of punt this another month. But if we can come to a conclusion tonight, I think we should. Our late summer and early fall agendas are going to be very full, so we should try to conclude this if we can. We have a situation where the borough has agreed to pursue this inner-loop project. This was done at least a decade ago, and we have to do it in small bites, so we are doing that now. The phase that we're working on now with the Racehorse Alley extension has a ton of aspects to it. There's huge stormwater investment, there's repaving of an alley that is like a lunar landscape, there's lighting, there's considerations for the pedestrian and bicycle users, and we've previously discussed this with both our solicitor and the chief of police present, and we've gotten their input on sort of the legal situation we find ourselves in. I can tell you that both President Hyzer and Mr. Lawver favor making no change to the traffic patterns there based on feedback they've received from a limited number of residents. As with many of our issues, we're finding that a lot of the feedback comes from non-residents, and we're happy to hear from anybody here in Gettysburg, but we do need to consider first and foremost the quality of life of the people who live and pay taxes here. I don't know that leaving things as they are is necessarily a legally tenable position for us. As both the chief of police and our solicitor have stated previously, the current situation requires frequently for vehicles to trespass on private property. Anytime two vehicles pass, let's see, it's about 75% of the block between Washington and Franklin, and it's about 20% of the block between Franklin and Beaufort. Anytime two vehicles pass in those sections, one vehicle is forced to veer away onto private property. That is not something that I think we can legally condone or encourage motorists to do, so we do need to think about some change here. The chief had cited this in a previous workshop, but the Pennsylvania Vehicle Code Title 75, Section 102, defines an alley as a street or highway intended to provide access to the rear or side of lots or buildings in urban districts and not intended for the purpose of through vehicular traffic. Our own ordinance, specifically our SALDO ordinance, uses the same definition of an alley with minor changes. It says, "In minor way, whether or not legally dedicated, intended, and used primarily for vehicular service access to the rear of properties which abut on a street and not intended for the purpose of general vehicular traffic circulation." And just for the sake of thoroughness, I can confirm also that in our ordinance, Racehorse Alley was named and ordained as an alley in 1978, so it is an alley. So I don't think we can leave it the way it is. We have to come up with some change here. The engineers have made their recommendations as to what the different options give us here. We've all had several months to pursue, or, sorry, peruse these options and figure out what is, in fact, the safest thing here. And I think the question each person on council needs to ask themselves is, as the borough has already committed to the inner loop, and we are going to see the project forward, how do we do this in a manner that is the safest for pedestrians and for cyclists, including children who might want to use their bikes on the inner loop? We have spent considerable funds in previous phases to make sure that we do have that safe access, especially for children, including putting brand-new sidewalks in yards where they never existed before, like my yard. But that's necessary, right? If we want this to be safe, we have to put the infrastructure in place. This project has significant funding from multiple sources tied to it, and we are, I think, very wisely and prudently using those multiple funding streams to accomplish other goals, infrastructure goals that the borough sorely needs to work on. But because we're able to work with Happy on this project, we are saving the taxpayers, both residents and business owners, some pretty sizable bills. Do you know the, what is the price tag on this next phase estimated at?
One and a half.
Yeah, it's 1.5 something, right?
About one and a half.
Right. So that's money that we are working diligently to fund with federal and state sources and grants as opposed to on the backs of the taxpayers. At this point, I would really like to hear from my colleagues here. I have taken the liberty of speaking at length with Mr. Lawver and Mr. Hyzer. I feel like I can fairly and accurately represent their positions. So please, everyone, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to hear your favorite of the options here, whether that be leaving it as is or with one of the engineering proposals made by CS Davidson. I'll kick it off. I'm a fan of the funnel. I think the funnel accomplishes the goal of eliminating the most vehicle traffic and making the safest environment.
I'll go ahead and piggyback on that. I would concur with that. I've always been a fan of the Option 6 Franklin Funnel with a shared lane. I think that that is, that gets the most checkmarks from our engineering team, and I like how it was, excuse me, I like how it was voiced tonight in public comment about be bold and make it, let's do something with this. This is an opportunity for us to do something to make it really special for bikes and pedestrians. It's not supposed to be a quick way to get through town. I do not agree with people going onto somebody else's property to allow another car to pass. I also have, on a business side of it, talked to several businesses on that, whose back ends are on that alley, service industry businesses, and they also have told me that they would prefer the Franklin Tunnel, the Franklin Funnel, because of their deliveries. For example, some businesses that are on the west side of Washington, they need their truck to be able to go eastbound when making deliveries versus the Chambersburg side, Chambersburg Street block, they're doing fine with the westbound. So the Franklin Funnel actually helps them satisfy that and makes it more of a pedestrian and bike-friendly. I think that it's important for those that have residential parking spaces in that alley be able to, that is for their purpose, that alley is for them as well. I don't think it needs to be a cut-through town, and I think it's an opportunity here to make really something special for Happy and looking toward more progress in our borough. Agreed with Destination Gettysburg, making sure that we are becoming an attraction for other things other than just the battlefield, because there's so much more to us, and we know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kipp.
I have two questions. Jacob, maybe you can answer, or Charles, you might. If we act on this in July with a vote, what is the timeframe then? What are we talking about time-wise?
I think if we, if July--
So we have several grant funding requests, and we will know the result of those grant requests sometime this fall. We already have the funding in place for the design and engineering, which is why we would like to be able to say we are shovel-ready by the time those grants are awarded. And to be shovel-ready by the time those grants are awarded, we are running out of time.
I think it's safe to say that construction would probably not be concluded for at least two years.
Oh, yeah, that's correct, yeah. We're talking about, we need a decision from the council so that CS Davidson knows how to design the project, so that when the construction money is in place, we can begin.
And do either of you know what are our legal requirements in notifying business owners, landlords, residents who are actually backing on that alley? Are we under any constraint to notify them in a timeframe or in a certain way?
All these activities are occurring within the borough's right-of-way, so it would be the borough's purview to make any upgrades, this or others, to the alley, and obviously the right thing to do would be to extend the courtesy to the property owners, abutting that said project is getting ready to begin.
We might also have to make considerations for alternative parking for them if they're unable to access their parking.
And one more comment before you move on down the table. I have heard from some constituents as well, but again, I would lean towards the constituents that are actually residents or property owners or business owners within this, that it truly affects, if they're, you know, their cars or their delivery trucks, et cetera. And no one has given me a reason why the Franklin Funnel is wrong. If there's no point that why it would be a wrong choice, then to me, it's the right choice.
Mr. Berger?
That's an interesting point, because I can't quite get behind a Franklin Funnel, but I have, over months, come around to the one-way proposition. I want to thank the people that spoke tonight, Happy Board especially. You guys spent years, countless hours. Especially, I want to shout out to Tom Joel and Susan Nogal and Chad Claybaugh, who you were filling in for tonight. You know, just, this is a big, big system that we're trying to do here, and this is probably the most contentious. And I have mentioned I've been sensitive about increased traffic on Chambersburg Street, and I would be more for the one-way west, just because I wouldn't frame it, I'm going to make the decision what's best for the community, not necessarily what's safest for pedestrians and bicyclists. You know, both my sons rode their bikes to the middle school and high school. I mean, I walk tonight here. I'm lucky to ride home. I bike and walk all the time. I mean, pedestrian and bicycle, it supports not just health and safety, but business, so all those points are well-taken. But I would, I would turn the question around. I would like to know, other than getting the most cars off the road, why is the Franklin Funnel the best option and not one-way west? Because I would think to keep it open to cars, that would be the least confusing thing for vehicle traffic.
So I think I can speak to that. The one-way west option, or one-way east, let's pick one, okay, we'll discuss one-way east, would eliminate, you know, that commuter traffic at a certain time of day, but then at the opposite, you know, when everybody's leaving work, the one-way west would be busier than, you know, than in the morning. And if you flip it, one-way east, in the morning, you're going to have busier car traffic, and in the afternoon, you'd have less. The funnel would, I think, in very short order, encourage everyone who doesn't live there to stop driving on that alley.
Correct. That's the point that I'm, that sticks with me, is that I want to make it hard for cars to go through, because it's not supposed to be for cars to go through unless they live there or unless a truck is delivering for a business. Otherwise, they'd have no business on that alley.
Right. It's not a bug, it's a feature, right? Like, I mean, the design is specifically to tell people, hey, you probably don't want to drive this way anymore, but we still have, you know, access issues for the folks who have a legal obligation to use the alley, or for whom we have the legal obligation to provide the alley, I should say. Ms. Lawson?
Yep. Thank you, everyone who's weighed in, especially the public comments. That was really, I think they were really helpful. And I, looking into the future here and thinking about, you know, what the work on Baltimore Street is going to, how that's going to take, you know, take effect in the next five to 10 years, what Baltimore Street is going to look like. I mean, this is a community that is, that was a small town, it was a small crossroads that is now, you know, over a million and a half visitors a year. It is a mile from one end to the other. It really would work well, Gettysburg, in terms of the borough, as a pedestrian-friendly community where residents, more residents, walked to different destinations, you know, going to dinner at night, going to the Majestic Theater, going to the Community Theater. Visitors coming in would park their cars in lots or the parking garage and be able to walk. We see that a lot in small communities. You see that a lot in European communities that are old, ancient cities, where the road infrastructure isn't meant for a lot of vehicles. And I think Gettysburg is a, in large part, is very much a pedestrian, bicycle-friendly community, at least I find it that way, since I do walk a bicycle in town, and I certainly see a lot of people doing that. I probably use that Racehorse Alley, again, like Mr. Niebler said, probably three or four times a week, either walking or bicycling, and I'm impressed, especially in the last year and a half or so, with the number of other people that I see either on bicycles, pushing baby carriages, or walking down that alley. There's a lot of pedestrian bicycle traffic. There's a lot of pedestrian bicycle traffic. And I think from a stormwater management perspective, what we're trying to do, the money that's being spent for the Gettysburg inner loop, what's, how this is all going to tie together, I very much support the funnel. I could get behind a one-way if, if that's what we need to do to reach consensus. I, I think I probably would be more apt to look at the westbound. But I, I think the funnel, as other people have already said, would really accomplish what we're, what we're hoping to do from a visionary standpoint for our community.
Mr. Moon, if I may, I know Ms. Butterfield just stepped out, and we're last one to speak, so I'll kind of fill that void here. If you remember back in, I believe this was April, Engineer Claybaugh presented this PowerPoint presentation where C.S. Davidson analyzed a lot of different metrics on the alley. They considered, you know, obviously, the focus and the purpose of, of what we're considering here. They did traffic counts, they looked at vehicle damage, or vehicle accident counts. And they, I don't want to, you know, rehash this, but at the end of that is, is the, the matrix that has been referenced here in discussions. I think Mr. Carr mentioned this. So this is the matrix recommended to us by C.S. Davidson. You can see that there's different criteria, different as it relates to one-way east, one-way west, and then the funnel, Franklin funnel. Franklin funnel checks the most boxes. One-way west checks the second-most boxes, and one-way east checks the least number of, of boxes. So this is what Chad Claybaugh presented to, to the council several months ago.
Mr. Moon, can I also just make one more point if I can?
Yeah.
And I, and I think it's important for my, for my colleagues on council as we consider this, if we, if we don't do anything, then we are condoning the use of vehicular traffic on private property in that alley. And from a legal standpoint, I don't know if, if our solicitor, Mr. Eastman, wants to address that, but I think that, that raises all kinds of red flags for, for me, certainly.
Unfortunately, Mr. Eastman is not with us tonight. He's on a well-earned vacation, but he has-
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I can't see him, so, okay.
Me neither. But he had previously said in a workshop that we cannot legally encourage people to do that. I would also-
And any, and any of us who are walking or bicycling, you, you do see that. And I know people are very courteous on letting people go, but yet, I keep, if, if all of those property owners decided to put fences up where their property end on the alley, the traffic would become, it would be a standstill, because people would not be able to get over, to be able to let traffic through. And I think that's something we really have to seriously take into consideration.
Yeah. You know, Mr. Lawver said something similar here, you know, earlier today. He said if, if people don't want, you know, other people driving on their property, they can put up an iron pipe. I, I can't see how that would be functional for anybody, you know, having to pull out your driveway, get out of your car, open a gate.
Sure, sure.
Move your car into the alley, get out, close the gate, and then drive away. That doesn't seem practical. And of course, the 75% of the alley that is between Washington and Franklin, that is adjacent to the college property, if they decided to put up a pipe there to keep you from driving on it, then we would lose 100% of the two-way traffic there, either way. So I would also like to sort of suggest to my, my colleagues here as we consider this final discussion here, of everything that's being invested in with this phase of the inner loop, 1.5 something million dollars, with all of the stormwater improvements, the lighting, the trees, the, the paving, all of that stuff, the cheapest thing for us to redo, if we decided to do, would be the one-way signs. So we can try this, and once construction is complete in three years, if we find that one-way in one direction, or the funnel is just an absolute failure, we can change our minds probably extremely cheaply here for the cost of a few signs. So I don't think we're really risking too much by making, as people have said, a bold and definitive vision for the future of Gettysburg. So I do have-
That's a good point. That's a really good point.
So Chris, would you say that your first position would be the one-way west? Is that correct? And Ms. Butterfield, what would your first choice be?
The funnel. Second choice, one-way west.
All right. By my count, that is four of us in favor of the funnel. I can also say, this is not a council that does a lot of things with four or three votes, and we, we do not have a lot of contention when it comes to these decisions, and we will, I think, continue to make sure that our colleagues' opinions are respected. So I will say that Mr. Lawver today communicated to me that we're leaving it as-is not an option, that his first choice beyond that would be the funnel.
Would be, I'm sorry, you said, Mr. Lawver said his, his choice would then be the funnel?
If leaving it alone is not an option, then the funnel would be his choice.
Okay, okay, thanks, thank you.
Mr. Heiser prefers doing nothing or one-way west. So it sounds to me like we have a consensus here of at least four, perhaps five, people who would favor championing the funnel. So I think we should move forward with that, if there's no objection here.
We can prepare a motion to that effect for the July-
Prepare a motion for July's meeting, and I, I just want to remind everybody, if it's, if it's a terrible choice, we can re, we can redo this easily once the beautiful revitalization of this derelict, decrepit alley is completed. Thank you, everybody, for a considered conversation. Thank you to those people from the public who made their opinions known as well. I'd like to move on, please, to our next topic for discussion, which is the one we've all been waiting for. Don't go yet, folks.
It's getting real exciting.
The employee handbook, chapters four through 24. Okay, last chance to sit back down.
You sure you don't want to do those things first?
All right. So chapter four, we are simply reviewing for final approval. All previous changes should be in place, and the same is true for chapters seven through 12. So what I would like to do is go through each one of these quickly, since our changes have been made, and I'm not seeing any notes in any of the ones to be reviewed. As we go through, don't be shy, please shout out if you would like to address something before we, these are adopted for this revision of the employee handbook. Starting with chapter four, and again, we reviewed this one last month, there was just really a few grammar or syntax things, I think. We had a couple little policy tweaks. Section 4.1 is a general statement on our not only intent to comply, but also to adhere to the spirit of the ADA and the Civil Rights Act. Talks about our responsibility as an employer, and how the determination can and cannot be made. Anything there for anybody? Yes, no, moving on. Chapter 4.2 is all about ADA compliance. This has to do with the legal requirements we have for meeting the needs of a protected I believe we have made all of the appropriate, person continues on to the next page, speaks about training, it speaks about accommodation. Chapter 4.3, determining an ADA disability and related matters. Much of this is settled case law, which has been reviewed by our labor attorney. Very little wiggle room for us on much of this. It speaks about pre-employment screening, testing, medical records, light duty and what that constitutes, and who makes those decisions based on departments. 4.3.6, disability defined. Again, we've made the person-first adjustments to the language there. 4.4, complaint procedure, this is based on established policy. We've made some tweaks here. As with many, many of the issues in the handbook, a lot of the administrative duties are shifted to the HR coordinator, whereas previously, they were in the hands of the borough secretary. Complaints about harassment are covered here. 4.5 has to do with medical examinations. Again, this is all black letter case law. As are 4.6, ethics and conflicts of interest. So were we not moving?
We are, but for the sake of timekeeping and the fact that we're going in order, I'll just make it a separate chapter at the end.
Okay. So 4.6, the ethics and conflicts of interest, everything, I believe everything from this point on will be severed and put in a separate section, because it does not belong in the ADA. This covers conflicts of interest, gifts and improper influence, contracts, purchasing, financial disclosures. Our whistleblower policy is 4.7. I don't think we made any changes there. Does anybody have anything about chapter four that they would like to address before we move on? All right, thank you, friends. We will move on then to chapter seven, compensation. As I recall, this was not terribly contentious. We did not have a lot of notes here. There were some grammar issues, which I assume have been adjusted. 7.1 deals with FLSA, which has its own section as well later on. 7.11, salary basis defined. 7.2, wage and salary adjustments following our fiscal year and our budgetary process. 7.3, subsections one and two have to do with emergency overtime, appropriate uses of overtime.
And just to note, those are subject to borough CBAs with Teamsters-
Absolutely, yes. As with other things in this handbook, where the contract supersedes borough policy, we will follow the contracts, yes. 7.4 is payroll, timekeeping, time sheets. We reassert our managerial rights there.
And on that, sorry.
Go, please.
And on that, it would supersede, we would go with the contract if, if there's any, you know, for, for such as borough CBAs with Teamsters, like 7.7.6 and other, other uniformed, non-uniformed employees. But all of them still get the handbook, sign acknowledging said handbook, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
7.44 has leave requests. 7.45 is altering time records. We frown upon that conduct. Pay schedules, pay advances, payroll deductions. Again, we are already, we've already reviewed all this, this is just a final check. Payroll deductions, business travel expenses, it's a lengthy section, we didn't make very many changes there at all. Electronic payroll deposits is 7.8. 7.9 is pay error corrections. 7.10 has to do with vacation, and again, this is a section that is going to be heavily governed by our agreements with the bargaining units. Lot about vacation here. Payouts in the event that employment is terminated or by either party. Emergencies, holidays, bereavement, sick leave, how all of this is accumulated in these 7.12.6 is termination valued of sick time, has to do with how we pay out accruals. Termination value of sick time before retirement ages. 7.12.8, abuse of sick leave. 7.12.9, pattern of calling off sick. Saturn 12, 7.12.10, documentation of illness, disability for non-occupational illness or injury, personal leave, pregnancy leave, jury duty. Much of this is legal stuff that we don't really have a lot of input on. This has all been reviewed by legal counsel. Unpaid leaves of absence as necessary and for what reasons. We, we'd had some discussion about that, making sure that people's needs are met during difficult times, when they need to take care of somebody. Holidays, holidays being another area where the CBA for the bargaining units would be, would supersede borough policy. Anybody have any issues on any of these items?
No.
All right. That takes us to chapter eight, the FMLA policy. Again, this section does not have a lot of wiggle room for us. Much of this was written by our labor attorney. This has to do with our compliance with federal employment law. There's the Family Medical Leave Act summarized in 8.1. Basic leave entitlement in 8.1.1. 8.1.2 is military leave entitlements. 8.1.3, job benefits and protections. Section 8.2 moves on to employee responsibility. Timeline for certification, recertification requirements, based on criteria set forth in the act. Three details the borough's responsibilities to its employees as it regards to family medical leave. Keeping of records, this is a borough responsibility, not an employee responsibility. Restoration of employment, notification of rights. Does anybody have any issues here? Again, these are all sections we've gone over. All right, thank you.
No, no.
Chapter nine, work safe, workplace safety plan.
Sorry. I'll just note on the keeping of records, that includes all employees, including the police department, keeping of records on personnel files in the borough management office or wherever it's under lock and key.
Yes. In relation to the Family Medical Leave Act, that would be 100% our responsibility to make sure that we are respective of every employee's rights. Yes, absolutely. Chapter nine, workplace safety plan, parentheses, pandemic. 9.1 is the purpose of this plan. We have shortened this section dramatically. This was originally written based on lived experience, that our staff beat out hammer and tongs, living through the pandemic. A lot of it had to do with stuff that had already happened in the past, though, so we opted to remove much of that and make this more of a blanket policy for what we would do were we to find ourselves in another public health emergency.
God forbid.
God forbid. Just for the benefit of the public and everyone listening- Just for the benefit of the public and everyone listening, as an entity that accepts state and federal dollars, we do not have the choice or luxury of ignoring a declared health emergency. We must comply. So it is wise for us to have a policy in place based on the experiences we accrued And that's what this page does. There is a section here about vaccination and proof of vaccination, should that be required, and confidentiality and privacy as required by any employer under HIPAA. Does anybody have any notes or comments about this section?
No.
All right. Thank you. That will take us to Chapter 10, which is on benefits. We did not make a lot of changes here at all. I think there was a couple spelling issues, but in general, our benefit program is established, it is tested, and it is largely governed by outside entities with whom we subscribe to 10.1 Covers Health Insurance. How That Is Paid For. 10.1.2 Is Dental Insurance. 10.1.3 Is Vision Insurance. 10.1.4 Is Cobra. 10.1.5 Is Life Insurance. 10.1.6 Is Short Term Disability. 10.1.7 Covers Workers' Compensation. Do you have a few notes here? Are these old notes or are these new?
Oh, yeah, they're old. So the only thing that I'll let you know there is that Gretchen's working on getting me heart and lung to put in with the workers' comp per that note that's in there from her.
Okay. So it sounds like we'll probably have to review this one more time.
You can if you would like to, but it's just going to be coming from her.
Yeah. Once she has inserted her notes, we will need to review those. And let's make sure that any notes here are acted upon and finalized, and we'll revisit this once more at the next meeting, please, at the next workshop. That said, let's table Section 10 and move to Section 11, please. This is Emergencies. And you'll note, this is separate from the public health emergency. This is a general policy. This talks a lot about how the Borough is a 24-hour-a-day, 365-day-a-year operation. And especially during public emergencies, we have to be prepared to respond. We don't get to stay home. So this is going to just outline some of that. It has our general policy at the top. And again, we're just reviewing this. Voluntary Time Offer Inclimate Weather For Employees Who Are Not Required To Appear. Certain Employees Are Required. 11.2 And Its Subsections. Spell that out. Does anybody have any notes on this?
No.
Murder? You good?
No.
All right. We will move to Chapter 12, which is the Remote Work Policy. This policy establishes our ability to allow certain staff to work remotely when situations demand it. 12.1 Establishes The General Policy. 12.2 Talks About The Availability And Communications Requirements. 12.3 Covers Timekeeping. 12.4 Talks About The Workspace And Who Is Financially Responsible For That. 12.5 Talks About Equipment And Technology And Where Our Responsibilities Lie There. I think that section is important. 12.5 Talks About Our Responsibility To Provide Technology For Our Employees. They are free to use their own devices should they decide to, but they must remember that any device they use would be discoverable should we be called to court. We recommend everybody use the Borough-issued devices. Expenses And The Lack Of Reimbursement For Expenses. If you're choosing to work from home. Security. An employee is responsible for securing any information that they have in their home that is confidential or in their devices. Injuries And Workers' Compensation. This is an important section that has tie-ins to the ADA as well. 12.12 Covers A Code Of Conduct. We do expect our employees to represent the Borough on their best foot at all times, even if they're working from home. 12.12.1 Has Examples Of Misconduct. And that takes us to the end of that section. Did anybody have any notes that have not been addressed in this section?
No.
All right.
No.
That is the end of our review for the day. We will revisit.
But we have 10 more.
They're short. They're weak.
We have 10 more.
They're weak. I'm sorry. Which one is it we're going to revisit? Not 10? No, 9.
We're going to revisit.
No, we're going to revisit 10.
We're going to revisit 10. All right. Thank you. But I think we can put 4, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12 to bed. Thank you. All right. That takes us to 13, which I don't seem to have here. All right. Chapter 13 is a short one here. This is a general policy on the personal use of Borough property. 13.1 General Policy. Personal Use Of Borough Property Including But Not Limited To Vehicles, Equipment, Machinery, Tools And Supplies Is Prohibited. Publicly-Owned Property May Be Used Only For Public Purposes. Employees Found Using Borough Property For Personal Use May Result In Disciplinary Action Up To And Including Termination. Any notes?
No.
I don't have any notes either. Mr. Heizer did send me some notes. He has no changes there. We can finalize that with the next workshop. Let's move to 14, please. Personal Appearance. We do have some notes here that we're going to need to discuss. Chapter 14 Personal Appearance. General Policy. 14.1 All Borough Employees Are Expected To Present A Clean, Neat, And Tasteful Appearance. Borough Employees Should Dress And groom Themselves According To The Requirements Of Their Position And Accepted Social Standards. Certain Departments Have Uniforms And/or Specific Attire As A Work Requirement. 14.1.1 Uniformed Police Officers. All Uniformed Police Officers Are Expected To Follow And Abide By The Uniform And PPE Standards Outlined In The Police Policies And Procedures. That note has been made at the behest of our Labor Council. That looks good to me. Anybody have a problem with that change from Kara?
No.
Excellent. 14.1.2 Public Works Department. All Public Works Department Employees Are Expected To Follow And Abide By The Uniform And PPE Standards Outlined In The Safety Policy And Procedures. Again, this was a change advised by Labor Council. Any notes? All right. 14.1.3 Parking Department. All Parking Department Employees Are Expected To Follow And Abide By The Uniform And PPE Standards Outlined In The Safety Policy And Procedures. Same note as before. Any input there? Thank you. 14.1.4 Administration. All Administrative Employees Are Expected To Be Clean, Tidy, And Dress In Business Professional Or Business Casual Attire. Casual attire may be permitted to be worn occasionally with the approval of Borough Manager, who retains right to revoke this privilege at any time for any reason. Any notes?
No.
14.1.5 Personal Appearance Guidelines. Without Unduly Restricting Individual Tastes, the following personal appearance guidelines are not permitted. Jeans, T-shirts, And Shorts. Facial Jewelry Such As Eyebrow Rings, Nose Rings, Lip Rings, Tongue Studs That Are Not Clear Or Flesh-Colored Are Not To Be Worn During Business Hours. Does anybody have an issue with that?
I think we're in a different time than we were in the 80s and 90s, and I really feel like there are certain things that I get about a professional clean appearance, especially in uniformed employees. But I really, I don't know. I'm not sure about the, when it comes to hair and facial piercings. I feel like it's part of expression of that individual.
And our norms have changed.
Our norms have changed.
So would either of you favor striking those provisions, or are you okay with the way they are?
I'm in favor of striking it personally.
Mrs. Butterfield?
I would be comfortable striking it, too.
Mrs. Lawson, do you have a position there?
I don't have a strong opinion on that, no.
Chris, you said you don't care.
Don't have a strong opinion.
I mean, I'll just note, if I can, well, I'll reword it, so. There have, I would never want us to get into any type of lawsuit about racial discrimination. I think people want to wear their hair the way they want to wear their hair. They should, as long as they're still, if their supervisor feels like, yes, they're still presenting themselves in a professional, clean manner while they're working, great. I don't care what color their hair is and what style or technique they do their hair in, nor do I care if they have facial piercings. I just think that we're in a different time than we were. We're in a different time than we were in the year 2000, so I think strike it.
I also feel that those provisions are outdated, but I am not objective in that, as I am one of those nose-ring-wearing weirdos. I do choose to take that out in professional environments, but that is a choice I make. I would like to have this full discussion with Mr. Heizer and Mr. Lauber present, if you guys are all comfortable with that.
Yeah. I think that the 14.1.5 really is kind of covered under 14.1 General Policy. Present A Clean, Neat, And Tasteful Appearance. I think if you start to get real in the weeds here, you're, we're opening ourselves up for things, and I just think, and I agree, we should discuss it with everybody.
Yeah. I'd like to discuss that with everybody. I mean, what constitutes a professional appearance is.
Subjective.
Right. I mean, it's really different depending who you ask. I'm sure if we pulled this room, we'd get wildly different answers here. You know, if we do want to be able to enforce, you know, somebody wearing flip-flops to work, we do have to spell that out, right?
And actually, I had a reaction to, there was an employee that was wearing flip-flops, and it just, it did not look professional at all.
Right. So, well, 14.
It was very, very unprofessional.
Yeah. Well, 14.1.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Well, 14.1 might say, you know, be professional if we were to come to a point where we did want to take disciplinary action based on somebody's lack of professionalism. We do have to establish what we consider that professionalism to be, so I think we should revisit.
Right. And everyone's going to have different, you know, varying degrees of what people consider professional.
Yeah. I can tell you that Mr. Heizer had no notes on this section, so I guess he's fine with the way those are, but I would still like to hear from Mr. Lauber.
For sure. And I just hear, I think that there's clothing and footwear is one thing that could be spelled out, and there's hairstyle, hair color, and tattoos and facial piercings. That is a completely different issue.
Sure.
So, but yes, let's table that and come back to it with everybody.
Any other notes on this section, anybody?
I'd just add, from staff's perspective on this, I think it's important that the council recognize you're the employer, and like a private business, that business owner has the right to essentially make appearance policy for their business. We're the business of providing services to the municipality, so you define what you think is professional.
Yeah, I think we all understand that.
And then you present that, and.
That seems to be the crux of the question here, so.
So, whatever your consensus is on that, but this is essentially some language that's.
We also have to be careful, too, because we have different, you know, you have uniformed staff, and so you have different, you know, you're already creating, you know, different apparel, different, you know, clothing choices and things that people, some people are limited. So, again, just kind of keeping that in mind as well, too.
That's a fair point. We have standards set by our collective bargaining agreements and policies for uniformed and non-uniformed.
Right.
As it relates. So essentially, what you're saying is administrative people have free rein.
Right. You know, is there equity in that? Should there be some sort of, I mean, that's where I would argue, maybe we need to have some, I can't believe I'm actually saying this, but, you know, some standards that would, there would not be a wide disparity between.
Sometimes old school is not so bad.
Yeah. It's interesting, the facial rings are not something that bothers me as much as the flip-flops and whatnot. But again, that's, you know, it's different opinions, so.
I agree. I don't want to see anyone's toes.
Well, and to your point, by the way, Gretchen did comment on like the hair color and everything. There's nothing touching on hairstyles, especially like protective hairstyles or anything like that. It's just the coloring of hair, you know, in a professional manner. Well, I would love to have purple hair. I really would. It'd be great. But.
We have a problem.
I just don't have a problem with it. I just, you know, what one person's, but again, it's subjective, I see.
Yeah, for the sake of that. Now, Gretchen did comment that there has been no, like, discrimination theories or anything over hair color or anything, but she did said she, her opinion was that we could admit it because sensibilities have changed.
Certainly. And with pending litigation in many states about hairstyles, we should be wary of policing people's behavior too much. But again, I would like to have that discussion with everybody here, if you don't mind. Let's move, please, to Chapter 15, The Evils Of Smoking. This is a general policy in keeping with the Pennsylvania Clean Indoor Air Act, and the Borough's intent to provide a safe and healthful work environment. Smoking is not permitted in any Borough buildings, vehicles, or equipment. This policy applies equally to all employees, citizens, and visitors. The Borough Manager will designate areas where it will be acceptable for employees to smoke during pre-approved break times. At all Borough facilities, the designated area is in the rear of the building. All ashes and cigarette butts must be deposited in designated containers. Smokers must work out a schedule with their supervisor for the appropriate times to take smoking breaks. That sounds like a lot of work. I think it'd be easier just to quit. Mr. Heizer did have a note here. He is seeing increasing numbers of local governments prohibiting tobacco use both on and off duty as a condition of employment, often in governments with fire departments because of the increased cancer risk and the argument over whether the employee developed cancer as part of the workplace exposure or not. I can confirm this. There are many employers who will not insure you if you are a smoker or a vapor, because the likelihood of them having to pay some very costly bills for your poor choices is very high. I don't know that we're quite there yet, but I could see how we might be the next time we revise this, as health insurance costs continue to climb at an exponential rate. Does anybody have any notes on this section as it exists?
I agree with Gretchen that it should be broadened a bit to include vaping. It's very specific on smoking in the first part, and she indicated, and I agree with her, that it just should be broadened to include vaping, which is becoming more widespread.
Any other notes?
I agree.
Fine.
Okay. Is everybody okay with Gretchen's note to include the vaping as well?
Yeah.
So her note was to limit it to more of tobacco use in all forms.
In all forms.
In all forms, yes. It'd be easy to broaden it that way.
Yeah.
Great.
Cool.
Thank you. We will move to Chapter 16, which has to do with how. Great, thank you. We will move to Chapter 16, which has to do with how keys are administered and retained. 16.1 General Policy: Certain Borough Employees May Be Issued Keys For Borough Facilities. This may be in the form of a physical key and/or electronic key. All keys issued to an employer are the property of Gettysburg Borough and must be returned upon separation from employment. All employee keys, I'm sorry, something was crossed out there. All employees will be required to sign a form acknowledging receipt of keys when issued. 16.2 Reproduction Of Keys Is Prohibited. No keys used by Gettysburg Borough may be duplicated without the prior approval of the department head or borough manager. 16.3 Misplaced, Lost, Or Stolen Keys. Misplaced, lost, or stolen keys must be reported immediately to a supervisor, department head, or the borough manager. Any issues there?
Nope.
Excellent. Good?
Good.
All right. 17. Parking. 17.1 General Policy: The borough reserves parking spaces for employees who operate municipal vehicles or personal vehicles for occasional use for business purposes and for visitors from the community. If all allocated staff parking spaces are occupied, employees are permitted to park at the Miederts parking spaces on East High Street by informing the parking department manager of their license plate information to receive free staff parking. To receive free staff parking permit.
To receive a...
A, a free, yeah, we need to insert an "a" there, please. Wes even made that note. Yes, appears there's an "a" missing from free staff parking permit. Hey, there it is. For the designated staff parking areas. The borough expects drivers to maintain a clean and safe parking space. Policy does not restrict off-site parking. 17.1.1 Use Is Not Permitted. The following are not permitted: littering, blocking front or back entrances, obstructing parking spaces reserved for the disabled, occupying spaces reserved for visitors. Visitor spaces are clearly labeled and marked with appropriate signage. Any employee is found parked in an unauthorized or prohibited area or in other ways, disregard this policy, will be subject to disciplinary action and/or parking tickets issued by the borough. Any issues there?
No.
No.
There may be a section that we might want to consider adding. We continue to struggle with some vehicles of a personal nature parked behind the building in the designated saliport where we keep our police cruisers. For liability reasons, I'm not sure that that is a best practice.
Right, that needs to end. Yeah, we can easily add that as a line.
They're blocking the cruisers?
No, but they're parked in there with them.
Yeah, we have recently had a security review of the building by an outside firm, and that area needs to be restricted to strictly on-duty police business.
Yes.
And it needs to be secured. Yeah, let's please add that, and then we'll review that next month with hopefully the full council present. Any other issues, anybody? All right, that takes us to Chapter 18, Outside Employment. 18.1 General Policy: Outside employment occurs when a borough employee holds a second job with another employer. Outside employment by a full-time employee is permitted only when such outside employment is considered secondary to the service within the borough, does not interfere with the performance or duties of the borough. This includes being available for overtime, as may be necessary, is not performed during hours when an employee is on duty at his/her borough position, will not embarrass the borough government or impair its inefficiency. So you can't moonlight as like a stripper, I guess, is what that's saying.
What did you just say, Mr. Moon?
You cannot moonlight as a stripper, according to this policy.
Oh, okay, okay.
No legal, financial, or ethical conflict of interests result from such dual employment. Conflicts of interest include, but are not limited to, performing outside work that impinges on the employee's ability to perform his or her job, or using information gained in borough employment to influence events relating to outside work or vice versa. That's an important one. Kara has a note here in this next section, that she has made changes based on Gretchen's recommendation. Consistent with any provisions in the collective bargaining agreement, and Teamsters Local 776, police officers may engage in secondary or outside employment activities if approved by the chief of police annually, or if the employment has been grandfathered. To be grandfathered, police officers must be working secondary outside employment prior to January 1st, 2023, and those secondary outside employment opportunities must be known to the borough. All other secondary outside employment opportunities will require annual approval. This is something the chief has spoken to Wes and I about. It is difficult to give too many of our officers free rein to pursue part-time jobs on the side, because they are often required to come in at the last minute. And so, in order for him to have an effective command force, it is difficult for him to have too many officers who work elsewhere as well. Chief of Police will assign such extra duty to those officers requesting it in an equitable manner. All full-time employees engaged in outside employment must provide information about the employment to the HR coordinator, including but not limited to the name, address, and location of the outside employment, position, title, nature of work, anticipated hours of work. This information will be reviewed by the borough to establish the outside employment meets the requirements listed above. The borough retains a discretion to revoke its approval of outside employment at any time. Employees who are required to be available for work outside of their regular work hours, overtime, or call-outs should be mindful that their outside employment may not interfere with the availability to work non-traditional hours. If an employee is found in violation of its policy, it may lead to disciplinary action up to and including termination. Any notes?
No.
Great. That is going to take us to 19. Political Activity. We do have a few notes here to review.
Should we table that one and come back to it?
Sorry, just one moment. Yeah, I think we do need to discuss this with Mr. Heiser and Mr. Laver present. I would like to table this chapter, unless anybody has an objection to that.
It will not came.
Thank you. That takes us to 20. Solicitations. General Policy: Unauthorized Solicitation Of Employees On Borough Property Is Strictly Prohibited. Suspected violations should be reported to the department head or borough manager. Employees who wish to sell merchandise, tickets, et cetera, to other borough employees may do so only during regularly scheduled rest breaks and lunch periods, or any time before or after business hours. Any notes?
No.
21. Did we be missing that one? I want to thank everybody here for their patience as we read through these. I think it's important that the public hear this text as well. Yeah, this is a project that's been ignored for far too long, and our intent here is to do this more regularly, so it won't be as arduous. We will conclude tonight after Chapter 24, so these last three are very short.
And it will also help protect us against, hopefully, future lawsuits.
Yeah.
Protect us, meaning the taxpayers.
All right, Chapter 21, Visitors In The Workplace. General Policy: To provide for the safety and security of employees in the facilities at the borough, only authorized visitors are allowed in the workplace. Restricting unauthorized visitors helps maintain safety standards, protects against theft, ensures security of equipment, protects confidential information, safeguards employee welfare, and avoids potential distractions and disturbances. All visitors should enter the building through the main entrance. Authorized visitors will receive directions or be escorted to their destination. Employees are responsible for the conduct and safety of their visitors. If an unauthorized individual is observed on the borough premises, employees should immediately notify their supervisor, or if necessary, direct the individual to the main entrance. Any issues? And, yeah, I think that's fine. 22. Workplace Violence Prevention. The borough is committed to preventing workplace violence and to maintain a safe work environment. All employees, including supervisors and temporary employees, should be treated with courtesy and respect at all times. Conduct which is reasonably perceived as threatening, intimidating, or coercive, either mentally or physically, by one employee, citizen, or member of the public, will not be tolerated by the borough. This prohibition includes all acts of harassment, including harassment that is based on any characteristic protected by federal, state, or local law. 22.1.1 Reporting Workplace Violence. All threats of actual, every, all threats of or actual violence, both directed and indirect, should be immediately reported to your immediate supervisor or any other member of management. This includes threats by employees, as well as threats by citizens, vendors, solicitors, or other members of the public. When reporting a threat of violence, you should be as specific and as detailed as possible. The borough of Gettysburg has established a zero-tolerance policy for workplace violence. Any employee who violates such policy will be subject to immediate disciplinary action up to and including to your termination. Kara has inserted a note at the beginning of that section where it says, "All threats of or actual violence." Our labor attorney has suggested we include, "If an immediate danger, call 911." I think that's wise addition. Anybody have an objection to that?
No objection.
All right, then our last section in here is, "The borough will thoroughly investigate all reported or known incidents of threats, harassment, or violent behavior. Document the results of the investigation and discipline the offending party accordingly. Any employee who feels that he or she is the victim of workplace violence, or who witnesses an incident of workplace violence, may file a complaint either in writing or verbally to their supervisor or the borough manager within 10 days of the alleged occurrence. The supervisor or borough manager will meet with the employee within 10 days of receipt of the complaint in an attempt to resolve the complaint to the satisfaction of both parties."
I just have a question there.
Yes.
What is the, what is, I mean, what is the purpose of the 10-day? I mean, obviously, we want, don't let things...
I think the intent would be to resolve it quicker than that, but what that gives us is the ability to investigate. It gives us the ability, you know, if it happens on a Friday, obviously, we can't do it in two days' time.
Right.
It gives us the opportunity to go through proper processes, make sure everybody's needs are being met, both the accuser and the accused.
So, but I wonder if what we're putting, by putting a specific day on it, might the victim be, feel like, well, I can't say. Are we caught, are we, might the victim feel like that they can't come forward, even if it has passed? Sometimes victims don't come forward right away.
Oh, you're talking about the first 10 days.
Uh-huh. Must, in writing, or verbally to their supervisor or borough manager, within 10 days of the alleged occurrence.
That's a super good question.
That kind of feels like if that person did not feel comfortable to do it in 10 days, then they no longer can. And victims should always feel comfortable coming forward, no matter how many days have passed since the alleged occurrence.
I was looking at it kind of a different way, in terms of, it seemed like a long period of time. If someone is truly concerned about workplace violence, that's a long, that's a long period of time.
It is. It's not uncommon, though, for somebody who's suffering abuse to fear repercussion, or to feel like maybe they've imagined it.
Right.
I think Mr. Carr is making a good point, which is that, you know, if it's day 11, you know, you're SOL. Like, that doesn't make a lot of sense to us.
I think it could be reworded in that we are, that we encourage them to come forward at any time, but I just feel like the Labor Council really needs to look at that again, and we need to be very sensitive to that. Putting a specific day on it, while it helps the process of the administration of said actions that we have to go through on a complaint. The point is, we need to be protecting all employees, and we need to listen to victims, and the accused, and figure it out. But victims should never feel like, well, I can't go and say anything, because in the handbook it said 10 days.
Right, I would agree with that.
So somewhere, there needs to be something reworded there.
I don't think we even really would need to check with Gretchen on that. I think we can just strike the time requirement and say, you know, come to either a supervisor, or the HR coordinator, or a trusted coworker. I mean, they don't have to report just to any one person. They can report to any member of the borough government, and then, you know, it would be reported up the chain as appropriate. There's also a note here from Charles that Wes has concurred with, which is that we should be inserting copycat language from our complaint policy that we recently adopted, and I would tend to agree with that. It gives us a uniform tool for dealing with complaints, whether they originate from a member of the public, as that policy would address, or internally. Does anybody have any objection to that?
No, I think it's very important to have a copycat language. Okay, Paul.
You guys good with that? All right, thank you.
Kara, is it usual to have a time limit on this type of...
I was sidebarring with Kara on that. I'm going to ask Gretchen if there's a legal reason the number 10 is in there.
Because we sent all of this to legal counsel before we, like, before all this. That way, she has comments and everything, and she did comment on that. So I'll ask her that specifically, if there's a reason why there's a time limit on it. I'm not sure why, but...
Was that in the existing text from the previous draft?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It was in the existing.
My guess is that we could...
But it could even be, the narrative of it could be that we, that we encourage employees to come and report it within 10 days, but not a, you must report within 10 days.
Not a requirement, no.
Not a requirement, but an encouragement.
Absolutely.
To get the process started. But that way, it leaves it open for the victim to say, "I finally have had enough, and I need to say something."
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Carr. All right, Chapter 23, Drug And Alcohol Policy. We do have a couple notes towards the end here, but it doesn't look like it's too much.
I couldn't hear that, I'm sorry. Could you use your computer?
We do have a couple notes towards the end, but it doesn't look like too much, so we should be able to get through this one.
Okay, okay.
23.1 General Policy: The borough is committed to protecting the health and safety of its workforce and all people who come into contact with its workplace and/or use its services. Therefore, the borough is committed to achieving and maintaining a drug-free workplace. To meet this goal, employees are required to report to work in appropriate mental and physical condition to perform their jobs in a satisfactory manner. Employees with questions on this policy or issues related to drug and alcohol use in the workplace should raise their concerns with the supervisor or the borough manager. 23.1 Time Off For Rehabilitation. Employees with drug or alcohol problems have, that have not resulted in and are not the immediate subject of disciplinary action, may request approval to take unpaid time off to participate in rehabilitation or treatment programs through the borough's health insurance benefit coverage. Leave may be granted at the borough's sole discretion, where the employee agrees to abstain from use of a problem substance, abides by all borough policies, rules, and prohibitions related to conduct in the workplace, and if granting the leave will not cause the borough any undue hardship. 23.1.2 Prohibitions. The Gettysburg Borough strictly prohibits the following: the illicit use of, possession of, sale, conveyance, distribution, or manufacture of illegal drugs, intoxicants, controlled substances, and/or drug paraphernalia; performing safety-sensitive functions within four hours of using alcohol, use of alcohol during work hours, or the use of alcohol for eight hours following an accident, or he or she undergoes post-accident alcohol tests, whichever occurs first; reporting to work under the influence of alcohol or illegal drugs. When there is a reasonable cause, vehicles, lockers, and/or related personal areas may be searched without prior notice to ensure a work environment free of alcohol and illegal drugs. Any employee found to have illegal drugs in his or her vehicle, locker, and/or related personal area will be subject to immediate disciplinary action up to and including termination. Under the Drug-Free Workplace Act, an employee who performs work under a government contract or grant must notify the borough of a criminal conviction for drug-related activity occurring in the workplace. The report must be made within five days of the conviction. Employees holding commercial driver's licenses... Employees holding commercial driver's licenses are subject to additional requirements as provided by law. Drug and alcohol testing circumstances. The Borough may conduct drug and alcohol testing for the following reasons.
Can I pause there?
Yes.
And go back to twenty-three, one point, twenty-three point one point two, prohibitions, the third bullet point. When there's a reasonable cause, vehicles, lockers, and/or related personal areas may be searched without prior notice. To ensure a work environment free of alcohol and illegal drugs, period. And then, any employee found to have illegal drugs in his, her, or locker, what happened to the alcohol? So if we're saying an environment free of alcohol and illegal drugs, then we need to spell it out again in that next sentence?
Agreed.
Alcohol and/or illegal drugs in his, her vehicle locker-
Just do it, just do it right there. All right. Thank you. Twenty-three, two point one, Random Testing. To encourage year-round avoidance of illegal drugs, all Borough employees may be randomly tested for illegal drugs and/or substances. All employees who are required to possess a commercial driver's license will be randomly tested every quarter for drugs and alcohol in accordance with the DOT slash FHWA governing law. Those to be tested will be selected at random, which means that every employee, whether previously tested or not, has an equal chance to, the word "the" needs to be changed to "be," to be tested every time tests are conducted. Once an individual is notified of the test, he or she should go to the collection site immediately. We have a note there that we have bargain policies, yes. Again, this is one of those, I think, we have a statement in the beginning that says, "Any policy stated herein that is superseded by the collective bargaining agreement, the contract will, will out." I, I think that blanket statement at the beginning should be enough to kind of cover us through any other chapters here. Twenty-three, two point two, Reasonable Suspicion Testing. An employee who tests positive for drugs will immediately be suspended for three days without pay and must see a substance abuse professional before being allowed to return or drive commercially. A second violation in this area will result in termination. There is no time limit. That can clear a violation. Comment from labor attorney, random testing has to be bargained. There are also Fourth Amendment issues.
Are you still on two point one or two point two?
I'm on twenty-three point two point one.
Okay, thank you.
If, hmm.
Yeah.
If there are Fourth Amendment issues here, does that mean she's advocating that this section be struck?
Stay out of the sun, drink water, wear sunscreen.
Good advice.
Good advice.
Sorry.
Drink water.
Do you know if she's advocating striking that?
I don't think she's advocating striking it, because we do have random testing now, and have had that for a very long time. We will need to go back and-
Maybe it's just something in the-
I mean, her comment here that there are also Fourth Amendment issues, like, cool, what are they? Let's address them.
What are they and how you address them is missing from that comment, so.
Yeah, we need to dig into that a bit more.
I'd like to ask her for any kind of, like, change of language that she has on it, since she commented that there's some issues on it.
But we do random testing.
Yes, through PISA.
Right.
They choose the employee.
Right. So we'll revisit this with Gretchen.
And, and the other thing I think we need to drill down on as well is if we do have an employee who does get a DUI, for example, our insurance carrier will no longer cover them, which would lead to a situation of termination. So I think we need to-
Yeah, I question-
Make a statement in there, Tim.
That next section to, of twenty-three point two point two, a second violation in this area will result in termination?
That's what I'm getting at.
We need a second.
We need to button it up.
Depending upon-
All right, so we'll revisit both twenty-three, two one, and twenty-three, two two.
Yes.
All right, let's move ahead to twenty-three, two, twenty-three, two, three, Post-Accident Testing. That sentence starts awkwardly. We just need to say, "Post-accident testing" again. Post-accident testing is required for drivers and co-drivers who are involved in an accident where death occurs when the driver is issued a citation by the police for a moving violation, and someone needs to immediate medical attention away from the scene of the accident, or when the employee is issued a citation by the police for, this is a very long sentence. We need to work on this a little bit, massage it. Scene of the accident. I don't have any problems with the substance, but that can be improved a little bit. Twenty-three point two point four-
Yeah, I agree on the, the last sentence, the drug and/or, I mean, the drug, it should be the blood and/or breath alcohol test. No? The drug and/or breath alcohol test?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a breathalyzer test for many drugs.
Usually, they would do breathalyzer and a blood test if there was an accident.
Yeah, yep. I believe you are correct there. We'll massage that whole paragraph a little bit. All right, twenty-three, two four, Returning to Duty, Return to Duty Testing. An employee found to have engaged in prohibited drug and alcohol conduct shall submit to return to drug, return to duty drug and alcohol testing prior to performing safety-sensitive functions. So, labor attorney asks, "Do we want to include a reference to medical marijuana? There are restrictions on job functions that cannot be performed. Also, you have to stand, you, you could have a standalone policy." I would be inclined not to include that, and I'll tell you why. There is no blood test that can say whether somebody has used marijuana in the last twenty-four hours. There is only a blood test that can say they've used marijuana in the last forty days. So unfortunately, that's the standard Pennsylvania uses for DUI, and Pennsylvania adopts a zero tol- tolerance policy there, and I think this would do the same thing. Saying that, you know, if you have used, even if it's medical, in the last forty days, you can't operate machinery or operate a vehicle is not accurate or scientific, and we don't really have a test for, "Have you used it in the last twenty-four hours?" Does anybody disagree with that?
I mean, yeah, there's no, there's no way to test it, but I mean, is there a way to discourage via a policy of, specifically, I'm thinking of our machinery?
If somebody has a prescription and it is covered, they're covered, you know, they've been prescribed by their doctor.
Sure.
They are protected under the same laws as any other medication. If they're not inebriated, they can operate a vehicle. So discouraging prescription medications, I, I don't think we can get into that arena. Any disagreement there?
I wonder what, what the, is there something with the bargaining agreement for, for example, the Public Works Department?
CDL, CDL law is that you cannot have any kind of drug-related-
So it's already there.
Including marijuana and medical marijuana. Same thing with police, so both bargainable units or any of them are both zero tolerance on all levels.
I wonder if there was something for those specific, is it, that we could copycat something from the CDL for those specific positions?
Yeah, I think we need to talk with our insurance carrier on how they would treat medical marijuana.
Those, those sound like policies that are just waiting for somebody to challenge them in court.
They're kind of already being challenged. Some places have instituted that, you know, Pennsylvania, you can't have medical marijuana, however, it is still federally illegal. So it's, it's a fun little gray area. So some employers are okay, but it is still federally illegal, so kind of, kind of weigh it. And then for us, I just figured a zero tolerance was fine, because CDL and police both have an absolute zero tolerance, so just to carry it throughout would be there. So honestly, the only people you'd be looking at as far as any kind of, per Gretchen's for job descriptions and functions, that would be administrative, maybe parking, maybe. That would be not covered by a CDL or policing policy standard.
So we have more questions to ask, Kara.
Yeah.
Solve this tonight.
Great. All right, twenty-four. Sexual harassment. For tonight, yep. We still have another, how many more after this?
So there's a lot here. Do we want to table this one until we have more? I've seen tons of comments from-
There's only three comments. I think we can get through this pretty quick. A lot of this is just compliance with state law as well and federal law. Discrimination, harassment, and retaliation policy. Twenty-four, one, Statement of Policy. Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and/or corresponding state law prohibit employment discrimination on the basis of race, color, sex, including but not limited to sexual orientation and gender identity, age, pregnancy, genetic information, non-disqualifying disability, veteran status, or national origin. Sexual harassment is included in, among these prohibitions. This policy prohibits not only sexual harassment, but also harassment based on race, color, national origin, age, disability, and/or any other classifications protected by law. All right.
I would like to, I, I appreciate that sexual orientation and gender identity are included. I would like to have gender expression also included. It is different from gender identity and different from sexual orientation, and I think both all three are what we went forward with on nondiscrimination ordinance for the Borough.
I would agree with that. This would be another spot where we have asked to make sure our language mimics the nondiscrimination ordinance. We need to make sure we're following our own ordinance, so I would, I would agree with Mr. Carr's assertion there. Anyone have a disagreement?
So would I.
All right. So we'll change that to sexual orientation and, sexual orientation, gender identity, and/or gender expression. Discrimination, harassment, and retaliation are unlawful. Employment practices and such prohibited conduct exposes not only the Borough of Gettysburg or the Borough, but individuals involved in such conduct to significant liability under the law. Employees at all times should treat other employees respectfully and with dignity in a manner that, so as not to offend the sensibilities of coworker. Accordingly, the Borough is committed to vigorous enforcing of sexual harassment policy at all levels. Twenty-four point one point one, Sexual Harassment Defined. Sexual harassment, according to the Federal Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, consists of unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, or other verbal or physical acts of a sexual-based nature-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Matt.
Go for it.
Discrimination, earlier, we deleted, in the first sentence, we deleted "sexual" and just said discrimination, comma, harassment, comma, and retaliation are unlawful, but then in the last sentence, accordingly, the Borough is committed to vigorously enforcing its sexual harassment policy at all levels? So it's important to have it there, but not in the first sentence?
Oh.
The word "sexual."
We are in the definition of sexual harassment here.
Okay, thanks.
I forgot where I left off, so I'm gonna start over. Sexual harassment, according to the Federal Equal Opportu, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, consists of unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, or other verbal or physical acts of a sexual-based nature where one, submission to such conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly a term or condition of one's individual employment; two, an employment decision is based on an individual's acceptance or rejection of such conduct; or three, such conduct interferes with an individual's work performance and creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive work environment. Sexual harassment is unlawful and hurts other employees. This was moved from a section below, based on previous comments. Sexual harassment is unlawful and hurts other employees. Any of the prohibited conduct described here is sexual harassment of anyone at whom it is direct, is sexual harassment of anyone at whom it is directed or who is otherwise subjected to it. Okay. Each incident of harassment, moreover, contributes to a general atmosphere in which all persons who share the victim's sex suffer the consequences. Sexually oriented acts or sex-based conduct have no legitimate business purpose. Accordingly, the employee who engages in such conduct should be and will be made to bear the full responsibility for such unlawful conduct. Twenty-four, two, Retaliation is prohibited. It is awful, we are in the home stretch here, folks. It is also unlawful to retaliate or take reprisal in any way against anyone who has articulated any concerns about harassment or discrimination, whether that concern relates to harassment of, or discrimination against the individual raising the concern or against another individual. Examples of conduct that would be considered discrimination, harassment, or related retaliation are set forth in the examples of prohibited conduct. Is that here somewhere? Oh, yeah, it's right there. Twenty-four, two, one, Examples of Prohibited Conduct. These examples are provided to illustrate the kind of conduct prescribed by this policy. The list is not exhaustive. A, physical assaults of a sexual nature, such as, one, rape, sexual battery, molestation, or attempts to commit these assaults. Intentionally physical, intentional physical conduct which is sexual in nature, such as touching, pinching, patting, grabbing, brushing against another employee's body, or poking another employee's body. Any notes? Okay. B, unwanted sexual advances, propositions, or other sexual comments are, such as, sorry, not the word "are." One, sexually oriented gestures, noises, remarks, jokes, texts. Oh, we are not in the home stretch here. Electronic communications, or comments about a person's sexual, sexuality, or sexual experience directed at or made in the presence of any employee who indicates, or has indicated in any way that such conduct is, sorry, is his, in his presence is unwelcome. Let's make that, instead of his, make that "there," please. Preferential treatment or promise of preferential treatment to an employee for committing, for submitting to sexual conduct, including soliciting or attempting to solicit any employee to engage in sexual activity for compensation or reward. Three, subjecting or threats of subjecting an employee to unwelcome sexual attention or conduct, or intentionally making performance of the employee's job more difficult because of that employee's sex. C, sexual discrimin, sexual or discriminatory displays of publications in the workplace, such as displaying pictures, posters, calendars, graffiti, objects, promotional materials, reading materials, other materials, including email or other electronic communications that are sexually suggestive, sexually demeaning, or pornographic. Two, a picture will be presumed to be sexually suggestive if it depicts a person, let's make that of any, of any sex who is not fully clothed or in clothes that are not suited to or ordinarily accepted for the accomplishment of routine work at the Borough, and who has posed the obvious purpose of displaying or drawing attention to private portions of their body, instead of his or her, please. Sexting or electronically sending messages with sexual content, individual images or videos, the use of sexually explicit language, harassment, cyber stalking, and/or threat, I am losing my ability to read out loud here. I think my eyes are going a little crossed. If anybody would like to take over, they can, otherwise, I would suggest we, we table this, but it's up to you guys.
Threats via forms of electronic communication, including email, text, picture, video, messages, online postings, blogs, instant messages, and social network websites like Facebook and Twitter. There was a note that that was added per Labor Council. I would question whether it's, whether to leave it at social, any social network websites, period, because there's several.
Yeah.
When you list two, then what if they list, did it on another one?
Right.
But social network websites, period, is what I would suggest.
Yep.
Displaying signs of other material purport, purport to misuse or get an employee by sex in any area of the workplace other than restrooms and similar semi-private lockers, changing rooms. The retaliation for sexual harassment complaints such as, one, disciplining and changing work assignments of providing inaccurate work information; two, refusing to cooperate or discuss work-related matters with any employee because that employee has complained about or resisted harassment, discrimination, or retaliations; and, two, intentionally pressuring, falsely denying, lying about, or otherwise covering up or attempting to cover up conduct. Do we want to stop there and come back?
I, I think we should. And again, I want to say, for those of you in the room and those watching at home, I know this is tedious, but it is important work we're doing here, particularly this chapter. We have learned some hard lessons here at the Borough about our responsibilities as an employer, and we want to make sure that this is thorough and correct, so as it is getting a little late, I think we should come at this with fresh eyes. I would like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our last topic for the evening, which is the oversized vehicle parking in the historic district. Mr. Gable?
In public comment earlier tonight, there was a qua, essentially a request to revisit Chapter fifteen, parking regulations. I would just note for the public that when the ordinance was passed in twenty nineteen, there is, when the amendments were passed in twenty nineteen, there is a very extensive, um, section in that called the Statement of Purpose and Legislative Intent, which defines the purpose of why the council made its parking decisions and policy at that time. So that's the premise to this discussion. What we're actually talking about today is not changing any of the purpose, which is a purpose of legislative intent here, but rather to address an issue that frankly has been, um, plaguing the Borough for a long time as it relates to parking for oversized vehicles. People come camping at local campgrounds, so they're driving RVs. Obviously, we have a lot of bus traffic, uh, throughout the municipality, and that has only proliferated within the last year with the closure of Pickett's Buffet. Uh, those folks that usually would park those buses in the large parking lot behind Pickett's now are looking to find other eateries to, uh, patronize. Historically, um, there have been only a few places that the Borough was able to direct parking for oversized vehicles. The fire department has a large parking lot in the rear, which some oversized vehicles would, uh, take advantage of, uh, those spaces. We often also would recommend the rec park. Ample parking out there for buses to park for a couple hours while their folks are walking around downtown. On off-year of off-season, meaning when school is not in session, we would also direct them to park at the middle school off of LaFever Street. Certainly, we would not direct them to do that during school's, uh, session. This has gotten worse, uh, and several people in the community have commented on the buses essentially parking just in the middle of the street, letting people out. It is creating an, an issue, uh, from a safety perspective. So, uh, the Borough has, uh, in its ordinance, Chapter fifteen, Section one oh five, uh, experimental regulations. I'll just quote it real, real quickly here, excerpts from it. The Borough Council may, from time to time, by resolution, designate places upon and along the highways in the Borough where, for a period of not more than ninety days, specific traffic and/or parking regulations, prohibitions, and restrictions shall be in force and effect, and shall designate such locations by proper signs and markings. The purpose of this section is to allow for the test and experimental determination of the feasibility and desirability of permanent changes in the ordinances of the Borough relative to traffic and parking. Parking is always evolving in the Borough, as we know, um, and we have had experience with what we call pilot programs in this section that this is allowing. Uh, if you remember, we had kiosks on the square for better part of nine months. We were testing that technology. That was a pilot program. The twenty-minute parking spaces, uh, was also a pilot program. The council formally ordained that. They considered the twenty-minute parking spaces to be a success. The kiosks on the square, not so much, so that was never adopted formally. App-only parking locations, that as well, uh, out by the, the college, uh, was a, a pilot program that is now ordained in the ordinance. So what staff is proposing is to do a pilot program to desk, to test oversized vehicle parking in the town core, essentially the historic district. And what staff is proposing to do is, um, like a official is not, our parking manager, who's not with us this evening, has taken a look at, uh, where there is, where, what on-street parking is what I will say significantly, may, maybe even grossly, underutilized. So, uh, parking meters on, say, on the second block of York Street, the second block of Carlisle Street, uh, the, the hump on Baltimore Street, if you will, right around the mid-block, uh, the no-man's land, as we all affectionately refer to it. Lot of park, uh, lot of parking meters are not utilized there. What staff is proposing is to take, on each side of the street, in these underutilized parking meter locations, take three consecutive meters, turn them into one parking stall for an oversized vehicle, make that an app-only zone for parking, and, uh, the other regulations would prevail. So right now, we have a three-hour maximum before you have to move your vehicle. So it's three hours for, in, in theory, if a bus were to park there, unload forty, fifty people, they have three hours to go find something to eat somewhere within a couple of blocks, walking distance from where their bus parked. So that's it. It's, it's that simple. We'd like to test, uh, oversized vehicle parking in the town core and see if that, uh, is meeting some of the demand that we, we know we have.
Would we be able to, um, how would, how, visually, how, how would it, would we be able to make that very obvious that that is for that style of parking?
There would, yeah, the, obviously, we'd be able to do it with signage.
Okay.
Uh, that's required in the ordinance here.
We would...
We would need a PR campaign. The folks at The Times might write about it.
I would suspect too that some of the bus companies, they could reach...
Sure.
You know, the, the, you know, the different businesses, restaurants and all, that work with these bus companies could reach out and let them know, notify them.
That's right. And Destination Gettysburg works with bus companies as well, uh, when tourists are coming in the town. So, um, I'm sure they would be happy to...
So you're talking, if I can just, you know, trying to visualize this, like the second block of York Street where St. James Church is, in other words, there would be parking there for people?
One on each side, correct. That's correct, one on each side.
Okay, on both sides?
Yep.
Okay.
Could that signage also have reference to the ordinance and idling? Because right now, a lot of the buses who park and wait for their guests to return are just idling for hours.
Sure. Yep.
And unfortunately, that's not being enforced.
And this would also be a pilot program as well, or?
Yeah, this, this whole oversized vehicle parking...
Yeah.
In downtown would be a pilot program.
Okay.
And, and in all honesty, we're not going to know an answer to this in ninety days. So ninety days from...
No.
We'll, we'll have to have council probably extend that. I, I would like to give it a better part of nine months to, as we get through the entire summer and into the fall, because we all know fall is very busy as well.
And you, you suggest, your staff is suggesting there are two on the second block of York Street, one on each side. And also, you mentioned Ba- uh, Baltimore?
Carlisle.
Carlisle.
Uh, near, between Stevens and East Water.
And it's, is it the, is it the same, it's the second block, or?
Uh, that's technically the second block, yes.
And Baltimore, it's the second block, or it's further down?
Uh, Baltimore Street would be the one...
So these buses just would park, would park there, and then the people that were onboard would get, would have to then walk from wherever the buses are parked to, to the establishment. That's correct?
Yeah, but generally speaking, that's no more than a two-block walk from any...
Right. Right. So they wouldn't allow...
That would actually be a legal requirement, right? I mean, currently legally, and the chief has spoken about this previously, they can stop on the square, unload, they can stop in front of a business and unload. They can stop, which means that they're in the vehicle, the, and the engine is idling, unload, and then move to a, uh, you know, a parking space, and then come back when they're ready to pick up their, their people.
I, I didn't think that, that's what we did not want them to do, right? Because they're double parked when they do that. Is that correct?
Right, but it's, it's Pennsylvania vehicle code. We can't stop it from happening.
We can discourage it because it is not preferable.
We can provide these spaces, but they still have the option of dropping off on the square. That's pretty common practice for, uh, the hotel. Quite often, I'll see buses for people visiting the train station will do that. They'll drop off on the square, either by the hotel or by the Will's house, and then, uh, park further away, and then return to pick up their, their party.
I mean, I, I would, I would say that, that I've seen that happen a lot, and, and that is, I prefer that because the, the square is so large right now that traffic can continue going
Yep.
while they're unloading, and then they go away and go park somewhere else. When you stop traffic in downtown, it packs it up three to four blocks while they're unloading and loading. So that's, my preference is unload in front of any of the quads, Will's House, Hotel, whatever, wherever you happen to be going. And then, because traffic can continue going around that bus, it doesn't stop traffic.
Yeah.
Um, and then go park in one of these bus parking, uh, spots.
Or try to direct them there to begin with.
Right.
Sure.
Right. Which is even safer, because then they're literally in a parking spot that they, is literally made for them.
Because even on the square, they're unloading into traffic technically because there's parked cars that they're blocking off the bus and into, and between parked vehicles.
No, it's, it's not, it's not, yeah. I mean, it's, but it's certainly not blocking traffic from continuing to flow. But, yeah.
So if this is something council's interested in trying, we can put a resolution together for July ten and, uh, have you do it, uh, or, or not.
I, I would be supportive. I think that's a good idea.
I think a pilot program is very, is a very good idea to try and see as we continue to see what's happening with buses as, as we're seeing. Some tourism definitely has been coming back this last couple of years, thankfully. But yes, with Pickett's being closed, um, we're seeing more buses come.
I'm gonna sign off now, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
But yeah, I would, I would, I would like to see a pilot program for bus parking.
Any objection? Thank you. All right, that, uh, things is, brings us to the end of our agenda. So we are once again at public comment. Uh, this section is open to any subject. Please feel free to share your thoughts with us. Um, we do ask you to use the podium. Please give us your name and address, and do try to limit yourself to five minutes. Any public comment, please?
Hi, I'm Shelley Nowitz from twenty-eight, Twenty-Third Street. First, I'd like to comment on the Interloop Project. I'd like to kind of piggyback on Gary Schaefer's comment about the use of alleys in town. I actually am on Zerfing Alley, so your choice of what you decide to go forward with this I think sets a precedence in the whole town. Zerfing Alley is very much used as a throughway. I witness dangerous situations there on a regular basis. Just within the last month, an elderly woman backed over top of a bicycle with a father and a son on it. Thank God they didn't end up at the hospital, but it was somewhat horrifying to see right in the moment because you couldn't stop it from happening. But there's so much congestion that goes on in the alleys. And also, in this alley, you have people crossing over, um, property owners' properties, even parking in property owners' properties, to run up to the medical marijuana store, to let the preschoolers off at the church. So I'm for the funnel because I think that starting to push the traffic back onto the main streets, which is where it should be, and not the alleys, is much safer for the community as a whole. And since I was here just a month ago talking about Chambersburg Street and, uh, the, um, patch that was there goes back to, for the long-term look at the future, if you want to minimize traffic downtown, you have to start making places, push the traffic to the fairways that they're supposed to utilize that, that as a community, we can start to say, there's too much traffic here. We're backed up three lights, so what traffic do we not allow to come into town anymore, such as tractor-trailer traffic, or other types of traffic that are, could be utilizing other avenues around town? So that's just part of looking at a long-term plan for the community and for the other alleys going down, because whatever precedence you set here, I think it's going to set a precedent for the other alleys. Piggybacking on that goes right into parking. I'm not really certain right now, I know I asked Chad earlier, like, how much utilization we have in our parking garage and our parking as a whole downtown. So I know you said tonight that there's dead areas in town that maybe we could be parking buses. The ordinance that you noted, and I didn't get to read it there on the screen, that I know is approved in two thousand and nineteen, which is pre-pandemic. A lot of things have changed in the scope of business and the community as a whole downtown. One, with Pickett's cha- charge closing, obviously, now we're going to have a lot more bus traffic downtown. But also, for a lot of brick-and-mortar businesses, we've had to compete fiercely with online businesses. So it's much more important for us to be able to give the best customer service in our businesses downtown because we're competing with worldwide markets now. With that being said, with that ordinance, um, currently, it excludes retail businesses and restaurants from having reserved parking in front of their brick-and-mortar businesses. Although theaters, tourist attractions, museums, basically everybody else but us is allowed to reserve that parking, even food trucks and ven- transient vendors. So I just think we need to relook at this. I know this was passed in two thousand and nineteen, but that parking ordinance is pretty much already outdated because our community has changed very quickly in the last few years with the way the downtown is being utilized. On a regular basis, I know myself and many other businesses downtown have hundreds of dollars' worth of quarters that we give out to our, um, parking, our people coming to our businesses. I give quarters to people that aren't even buying anything in my business on a daily basis, and I don't, I used to be, like, resentful of having to give quarters. Now I make that almost like a customer service of the community to keep people coming downtown. A lot of people are saying, you know, I don't have time to park at the parking garage and get to your store, Shelley. I just want to pop in there, get a gift. I've even ran out on the sidewalk, which I'm not supposed to do, and handed in a window to their car because they gave me their credit card over the phone, when it would be nice if we could, those of us that choose to pay for parking spaces in front of our store. Not everybody's going to do that, and I understand that years ago, this was like a hot-button topic, but a lot of things have changed in the last few years. And I think that when we look forward to solutions going forward, we really need to look at the whole parking ordinance as a whole because as a brick-and-mortar business, I've only been in business for eight years. I've owned my building for five years, and I've lived in it for three years. I've seen a lot of changes occur over the last eight years. And that parking is a big issue that I hear every day. And I would like to see us revisit the whole ordinance on not just one topic, but many topics for it, and put that as a very front-and-forward priority because it's something that every business has to hear about every day. If there's ten people that come into your business, eight of them are complaining about the parking. I would also like to ask that where can we find the statistics? Because if I reserve three spaces in front of my business and I'm allowed to pay for those spots in front of my business, it's pushing other people to use the parking garage. If you have, then you know you're getting that revenue for those spaces every day of the week, seven days of the week, three hundred and sixty-five days of the year. Not every business is going to do that. Not every business wants to afford to do it or feel like it's a priority. But there are several businesses I know in town that would find that be very helpful for their business, whether they rent one space or two spaces. And then, you know, we always hear about parking being scarce, but I live downtown, and I see lots of parking available every day. So I'm just curious, like, what are the real numbers? Because it kind of goes back to, if we push people out of the alleys and onto the main streets, if we push people off the downtown parking because we allow people to have reserved parking for their customers, it's going to push them into the parking garage and fill up the parking garage. So that's just my sort of take on it being here downtown. So I hope that you'll consider that and look at the whole part of parking ordinance, not just one part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment here tonight? I do not see any, so we will be adjourned. Thank you.